We're going to call this meeting of your Newark City Council order. We have the city of Newark on our background, so that'll be different for this evening. First this evening, we have a roll call. Jennifer, please call the roll.
Mrs. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Guthrie?
Here.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Marmee?
Here.
Mr. Rath?
Here.
Mr. Ruleta?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Bug?
Here.
Mr. Kost?
Here.
We have everyone present this evening. Next on the agenda, we have the invocation by Mr. Johnson, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Let us be in prayer. Lord, we come to you as humble servants. Bless us in our deliberations. We are thankful for the opportunity to gather, to serve, to work for the common good. In a larger sense, we seek to know and do your will. Bless those in need, those in joy, and those who seek your guidance. Grant us peace, and in your name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the fight in the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the desert of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus. That's the time for council to discuss anything that may be happening during the legislation tonight they'd like to discuss. Do we have anything?
Mr. President?
Mr. Rath?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to bring up, just to let people know ahead of time what I intend to do tonight, an issue 15-04 during the first reading of that ordinance, which is the BSL law. My intent is to call for a vote to waive the two-day reading rule, follow it, and should that pass, I want to follow that immediately with a motion to table to a time certain, March 16th. And I'll tell you, the reason I'm doing this is when this went through Safety Committee, I urged the Safety Committee to pass this on to full council because of the outpouring of support that we have for this issue, that I felt it was necessary to have a vote of full council. I understand that in two weeks, we won't have a full council here, so I'd like to push this back so that one week can have a vote of full council, and two, that we'll have for those people who haven't made up their mind yet, haven't made a decision, we'll have plenty of time and plenty of opportunity to do whatever, do research and due diligence they want on the issue.
Thank you, Mr. Rath. Do we have anything else for councils or caucus this evening? Okay. Next, we have our council minutes from January 20th, 2014. Is there a motion to approve of it?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Rath. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. All those in favor, simply probably saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. That passes. Thank you. We have four reports this evening from standing committees, one from Finance, one from Capital Improvements, one from Personnel, and one from Safety. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Next on our agenda, we have Communications. We have a few this evening. We have two from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. One is the transfer application for Newark Foods LLC at 814 Mount Vernon Road. The other is a new application for M&amp;D Groceries, Inc., doing business at Country Club Carryout at 597 Country Club Drive. There are numerous letters, four and three, against the pit bull legislation. Without objection, those will also be received and filed. Next on our agenda this evening, we have comments from citizens. There are two places for citizens' comments tonight. One is now, before the legislation, and one is after. Just a reminder, this is not a debate with council. This is just an opportunity for you to come up and give us a brief statement, give us your name and address for the question. If you'll put your hand up and let me know you'd like to speak, so I can identify you and have you come up.
Yes, sir. My name is Stephen Baldwin. I live at 20924 State Route 31 in Marysville, but I was requested to come by several members of the Newark community to discuss pit bulls and breed-specific legislation. I represent the Animal Control Task Force of Ohio, which is formed as the second humane society in Union County, recognized by law to enforce Title IX of the Ohio Revised Code by appointing county humane agents through ORC 1717.06 to investigate, seize evidence, and file charges of animal cruelty. After running a traditional humane society for six years, where I was not allowed to adopt out pit bulls regardless of their temperament, and was not requested to focus on field investigation work, I resigned from my position in 2013 to focus solely on this issue and to provide statewide focus, to provide assistance in education anywhere possible and anywhere where requested. As a humane society with a sole focus on field investigation work, my organization has expanded its efforts to all of Ohio where services are lacking and our help is requested. Out of the 116 dogs that we rescued in 2014, 80 percent of them, or 93 of those dogs, fell into your broad bully breed category. These dogs did not voluntarily seek out to be owned and abused by the skin of the earth. They were in fact quite involuntarily subjects of victimization. After I rescued these dogs, I put them into homes where they can be rehabilitated using positive reinforcement techniques that have been proven time and time again to help dogs that have come out of bad situations. Instead of putting them into a traditional sheltered environment, which you'll see in animal control traditionally, 91 of those pit bulls, or 98 percent of them, were successfully rehabilitated and adopted into loving families. One of them was euthanized because it had severe cancer problems. We removed the tumors. They grew back aggressively. One of them was euthanized for behavior reasons that we felt made it dangerous to go out into the community. Mark Twain says there's three types of lies in the world: lies, damn lies, and statistics. And no matter what issue we're talking about, no matter what contentious issue we're talking about, you're going to hear all three of them, and I'm not here to throw more at you. What causes an issue like this to be so contentious? Why are some of us so strongly on one side and others of us so strongly on the other side? Is one group evil, bad, plain, wrong, or stupid? Or are perspectives shaped by our experiences? And are they then reinforced by accepting information that only coincides with our own perspective? My perspective is not that of an activist, although many of my friends are activists. My perspective and the reason why I'm dressed the way I'm dressed today is that of a county humane agent and a shelter director. Unlike your animal control officer or your dog warden, your humane agent is the officer that is out there to protect the animals and to investigate animal cruelty and to find out why these animals are acting the way they're acting and being treated the way they're being treated. We take animals out of the worst situations possible, and time and time again, we transform them and create better dogs that are safe for the community. And the reason that we're able to do that is because dogs live in the environment. I'm going a little bit off topic here, but dogs live in the environment that they're placed in, and the wrong kinds of people can get the right types of dog and do whatever they want to them. And legislation that focuses only on those dogs rather than the individuals is not going to do what you guys want to do, which is create a safer community. And I know that that is your ultimate goal, and that's my ultimate goal as a humane agent, is to create a safer community. There are better ways to do that. I've been the one that's made the call to euthanize dogs. I've held them personally as a shelter director, and I've apologized to them for what their owners have created and turned them into. I understand the responsibility that you have as city council members, and I also understand why these dogs end up the way they end up. I can give you the Michael Vick fighting dog stories and tell you how they've been rehabilitated and turned into therapy dogs, and I can talk to you about dog behavior and genetics and their mental and physical needs until I'm blue in the face, but I won't. What I will do, though, is I will ask you to look at three policies and three models of non-breed-specific, dangerous dog ordinances. They focus on responsible ownership, on accountability, and on creating a safer community, which is, I believe, your intended purpose for this legislation. And if that is your intended purpose, I strongly urge you to take a close look at these specific models. These aren't from activist groups. These are from the AVMA, the American Veterinary Medical Association, the APD, the Association of Pet Dog Trainers, which is the premier dog training group for professionals. These aren't from activist groups. These are from verified groups that know what they're talking about, and they know about dogs. Utah has recently become the 14th state to ban this sort of legislation statewide. Other states are following. We know that this doesn't work. I don't envy your position at all. I appreciate the fact that you're taking it seriously and that you're considering all the options. I think it's clear that the community is requesting that you look at this seriously, and I hope that you will look at these models and consider them as more effective means to actually getting what you want accomplished here as a community, which is a safer community with responsible dogs. Thank you very much for your time, and if you have any questions, either now or after, I will be open to you. Thank you.
Tonight, we're going to have no more clapping. We're just going to go through these tonight. Next.
My name is Lori Carlson, and I'm the executive director of the Licking County Humane Society, and also a pit bull owner, by the way. I want to just take a-
Give me your address, ma'am.
Oh, sure. It's not, the shelter address is-
Your address.
973 Nadine Drive, Heath, Ohio.
Thank you.
I will be very brief. I can only echo what Stephen just shared. At the Humane Society, in the last four years, we have placed 93 pit bulls or bully breeds for adoption, all very successfully, none of whom have subsequently injured or hurt any of their owners. I would like to extend an invitation to any of the council members to come down to the Humane Society, spend some time at the shelter, visit with some of our pit bulls if you haven't been exposed to pit bulls, and we'll be happy to show you the work that we're doing in the community, which I think will then help with your decision. We at the Humane Society obviously support doing away with the BSL legislation because you have wonderful, wonderful families in this community who want to adopt pit bulls that we have not been able to place with, good pet owners, responsible people. And I would encourage you to open this community up a little bit to the animals that are in need in this community with smart decision-making. Obviously, we're very cautious about who we place pit bulls with or bully breeds. We do require background checks. We do require reference checks, and we do require veterinarian checks. So we can certainly share what model we've used to make sure that pit bulls are being placed into responsible families. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't going to, because they covered it really well, and this is going to hurt some of your sensibilities, but I think it's best to be done.
Do you want to just hand us to Ms. Hall and pass them around?
No, I'm going to leave them on the table.
Okay.
Rhonda Loomis, 870 West Church Street. While the pictures I've put on the table may hurt your sensibilities, they most assuredly do mine. I wanted you to know that what is before you is deed, not breed. Each of these pictures represents a bite from a lab, a Jack Russell, a Husky, and a Doberman, none labeled vicious prior to this. Would a law or piece of legislation labeling them stop this from happening? Does it seem the discretionary power of the ACO to label a dog a pit stop dog bites? This has been made more obvious since the local paper has found three stories to print showing the BSL at work. What is alarming is the fact that these pits, as reported by the Advocate, are being turned back over to the negligent dog owner for self-monitored quarantine. I find that a safety issue, and that is what you are here for, the safety of Newark. If your replies to this well-organized group of people is true, it is time to work on real legislation for making those who own the dog that has bitten someone begin the court and finding process. During the last Safety Committee meeting, the closing statement from Ms. Floyd was that council would not be discussing the resolution to appeal the BSL from the Newark's codified ordinances. With respect, they are all here because it is on the agenda. It is on first read. Of course, that's all changed since then, but... And in the background, you may be receiving an email from a committee member still presenting reasons to not repeal the BSL. The discussion, whether in public or not, is still going on. While in court last Thursday for another personal matter, in fact, a failure to confine a dog case that hits home for me, and by the way, not one person in this room believes that that person should not be in jail. He should be and should remain so for a time. There waiting in the hallway was Ally, she may be here somewhere, wearing her "Ban the BSL" shirt. She was second up after a domestic violence, and as tough as she wanted to seem, there she was with a misdemeanor shaking, the judge saying, "Do you understand that you have been cited under Newark's codified ordinance 618.22, exotic and restricted animals?" At that point, I thought I can definitely see where the confusion would come in with the charges read. She attempted to explain her situation, to which he said, and I paraphrase, "I'm not an attorney, guilty or not guilty," and done. See, the clerk pay the fine. She wasn't belligerent or incensed she was there. She is trying to pay fines, do all the other things necessary to bring her dog into compliance. It is costly, and this young girl cannot simply pull out her wallet and pay these mounting bills. If you say, then get another type dog. Well, she has this dog. She loves her dog. And now she's trying to pay for the discrimination against her dog's breeds. Folks who don't know the law in pit cases until the ACO shows up. The timing given to comply is discretionary, and as you heard at committee, no real set date, no timeframe that is set in stone. Fines compound, and court dates build, and financial hardship occurs. By the time you have tried to understand and comply, you owe a lot of money, and your record has at minimum a misdemeanor. To you, Mr. Rath, you have done the most unpopular thing in the realm of politics. You listened to the voices of the people that packed this room on a very unpopular topic. You are fighting against an old mindset, your party, the other party, the newspaper, but you are a champion in the eyes of these common folk with their cry for justice, for change to a discriminating law. Sir, I admire the fact that you are doing exactly what you were elected to do. We have heard no other voices against repealing the BSL publicly. The stories of dog bites are vague, no names or pictures of the dogs, words like alleged and looked like a pit. This room of activists supports you for supporting them because you are showing the difference between a civil servant and a politician. To the rest, repeal the outdated BSL as the state of Ohio did three years ago. Make this a crime of deed, not profiling citizens based on the appearance of their dog. Blame the owner, not the dog. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd.
My name is Rachel Wade from 490 Essex Downs Road, Newark, Ohio, and I'm here today because we have recently been learning about federalism in our government class at CTEC. And last week, my teacher used Newark's controversial pit bull law as an example of local government in action. My class was really touched and interested in learning what we could do to change this law. And there was a general consensus in our class that this should not discriminate against pit bulls, but should apply to specific dogs with a history of aggression. I personally was impacted by the current law because my family wanted to adopt a pit bull last year but couldn't because of the extensive insurance requirements. I am not yet old enough to vote. However, I hope that the council will consider the opinion of the youth in Newark and vote to change this unfair law. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice job. Is there anyone out here who would like to speak for keeping the law the way it is? I will make sure you're treated respectfully, so if you would like to speak, don't be concerned. Okay. And one more question. I've had folks on council ask me, if you live in the city of Newark, would you raise your hand?
If you live in the city of Newark?
If you live in the city of Newark, raise your hand. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else for this first section of citizens' comments? One more.
Sorry, I had to light this on. My name is Andrea Langley, 1871 Cedar Circle. I am not a pit bull owner. I do stand up for what is right in the face of what is wrong. Now I'm going to start crying. Sorry.
It's a safe time.
I'm a registered voter in Licking County. Let's consider what is before us. Civil liberties are being compromised. Animal rights are being violated. In my opinion, the current ordinance treats all owners of pit bulls as criminals, finding them guilty of having a vicious dog when their dog has shown no aggressive behavior. Sorry, I'm just, this is just very upsetting. Having a boxy head is not evidence of an aggressive dog. It targets those without the income to comply with the laundry list of requirements with this ordinance. When they cannot financially comply, their pit bull is confiscated and placed in the Licking County Animal Shelter. I use the term "shelter" loosely. A shelter should be a safe haven for those confiscated, forgotten, neglected dogs who are waiting for their owners to claim them, or for a new family to offer the home they deserve. Who pays the price when these adoptable dogs are not claimed by their owners? The pit bulls pay the price, and as the dogs are dying, that's the collateral damage related to this ordinance. Once they're at the pound, they're housed in isolation. No playtime, no toys, no walks, no human interaction. Volunteers are denied access to these dogs. They are fed once a day. Rescue groups cannot pull these dogs. They are not put up for public adoption. We are talking about perfectly adoptable dogs, whose only crime is being deemed a pit bull by your animal control officer, which, by the way, is his subjective assessment in assigning a breed. On day three, the perfectly adoptable pit bull is killed. I'm sorry. I created a change.org petition in August of 2014, which to date has 2,893 signatures in favor of stopping the killing of innocent pit bulls at our pound. I would be happy to forward this link with a petition to each of you. The public does not agree with this practice, and this practice is the direct result of a flawed breed-specific ordinance in the city of Newark. Breed bans punish responsible dog owners and innocent dogs. The graph you were presented a couple of weeks ago showed a flat line of pit bull bites from 2000 to 2014 in comparison to the highly peaked and valued numbers for all other breeds. That's 901 bites attributed to all other breeds, 26 to pit bulls, from 2000 to 2014. The graph was created using the Licking County Health Department bite statistics, the same stats the Newark Advocate would have you believe they used in a recent article, but clearly they did not. Licking County does have a dog bite problem, and that problem is not related to pit bulls. If you polled Mr. Average New York citizen and posed the question, would you rather determine a dog's viciousness based on individual actions or their breed, the overwhelming response I imagine would be to base it on their action. That's common sense. I ask for a vote of yes to repeal the current BSL ordinance. Innocent pit bull lives are depending on it.
Thank you, Mrs. Do we have anyone else? All right, one more.
My name is Rita Hupp. I live at 1521 Mallard Circle West in Newark. Wasn't really planning on speaking tonight. I have a lot of people that I work with at the post office that would totally disagree with me. I am a dog owner, dog lover. I have huskies. I do not have a pit bull. But I am here, I'm not completely emotionally attached to this in any way. You know, I've been perusing things. I think it's unfair. It is not a breed problem. It is an owner problem. I encounter different breeds every day. I have encountered dogs in every end of this town, and it is not a breed problem. It is an owner problem. It is a problem with no follow-ups. When we have, we have lots of issues with dogs. We have no follow-up from the city, from the dog warden. We don't know if owners have been spoken to, have been cited, if their dogs were out. If there is an incident, we have no follow-up with the owners. The post office is on their own. If we have another problem with the dog, we have to force people to move their mailboxes. We have to force them to get a P.O. box because we don't get any help from the city. And I mean, the biggest thing to me is that it's not the breeds, it's the owners and repeat offenders. And every breed has a tendency to bite. My worst dog bite had been bitten twice. One was by a protective lab mother early on in my career. Startled her, she had a batch of puppies on the porch. She was protecting her puppies. The one bite, and they're euthanized, should not apply to a dog like that. My worst bite was a beagle. Flew out a door, through the screen behind me, caught the back of my leg. I had all four puncture marks in the back of my leg. The dog was not euthanized. The gentleman got a P.O. box, so we didn't walk through her yard anymore. End of problem. And I guess that's all I have to say. Oh, I did, I believe I had a letter written that was read to the Safety Committee that should be on record also. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda this evening, we have ordinances on the second reading. Order 15-01. Jennifer, would you read that for me?
Ordinance number 15-01 by Mr. Kost, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rath, Mrs. Floyd, an ordinance extending the authority of the temporary board of zoning district division.
You've heard the second reading of 15-01. What is your wish?
Mr. President, Mr. Kost. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 15-01.
Motion by Mr. Kost, second by Mr. Bug. Do we have any discussion on 15-01? Seeing none, huh? Bottom.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Ruleta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bug?
Yes.
Mr. Kost?
Yes.
15-01 has passed, 10-0. Next, we have on the second reading, 15-02.
Ordinance number 15-02 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rath, an ordinance amending the position, classification, pay range, and department authorization tables of the city of Newark, Division of Water and Wastewater, by creating the classification of financial secretary and setting the compensation therefor, and abolishing one secretary position.
You've heard the second reading of 15-02. What is your wish?
Mr. President? Mrs. Floyd? Make a motion to adopt 15-02.
Mrs. Floyd, second by Mr. Bug. Is there any discussion on 15-02? Seeing none, Jennifer, please call the roll to vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
No.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Ruleta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bl- Bug, sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Kost?
No. 15-02 passes eight to two. Next, we have ordinances on the first reading, 15-04.
Ordinance number 15-04 by Mr. Rath and Mr. Marmee, an ordinance amending Chapter 618 of the Codified Ordinances of the city of Newark, Ohio regarding breed-specific vicious dog designation.
Mr. Rath?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on 15-04.
Motion by Mr. Rath to waive the two-day reading rule, second by Mr. Marmee. I know you've already stated your reason, Mr. Rath, but you want to state it again.
Yeah, I think this deserves a vote on full council and a lot of weight in it, which I'll do after we waive the two-day reading rule.
Thank you.
For table.
Jennifer, please call the roll to vote on waiving the two-day reading rule on 15-04.
Mrs. Floyd?
No.
Mr. Guthrie?
No.
Ms. Hall?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Ruleta?
No.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bug?
No.
Mr. Kost?
No.
So, the two-day reading rule has not been waived, so this will just be read again in two weeks for the second reading. Right Director Sasse?
Correct.
Next, we have ordinances on the first reading, 15-05. Just to explain to the group out here, if we'd have six votes, we would waive the two-day reading rule. Mr. Rath is going to ask to, we either vote on it tonight, or he would ask to table it. We didn't get enough votes, so it will be read for the second reading, which will be in two weeks. I'm sorry.
In one day.
Two weeks and one day. Yes, I'm sorry. The 16th is a holiday, so it'll be actually the 17th. Okay, 15-05.
Ordinance number 15-05 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Rath, Mr. Kost, Mr. Marmee, an ordinance amending the position authorization tables of the city of Newark, Department of Public
amending the position authorization tables of the City of North Department of Public Safety Division of Police, reducing the position of captain by one through attrition resulting in a strength authorization of three.
15-5 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have resolutions on the second reading, 15-02.
Resolution 15-02 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Kost, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rath, and ODOT legislation to construction of pedestrian bridge over log pond run and various sidewalk improvements at various locations.
You've heard the second reading of 15-02. What is your wish?
Mr. President, Mr. Kost. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 15-02.
Motion by Mr. Kost. Second. Second by Mr. Bub. Is there any discussion on 15-02? Seeing none, Jennifer, please call the roll of vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Kost?
Yes.
15-02 passes 10-0. Next, on the second reading, we have 15-04.
Resolution 15-04 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Kost, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rath, ODOT legislation for construction of a new interchange over State Route 16 to replace current at-grade intersection with Cherry Valley Road.
You've heard the second reading of 15-04. What is your wish?
Mr. President, Mr. Kost. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 15-04.
Motion by Mr. Kost, second by Mrs. Floyd. Do we have any discussion on 15-04? Seeing none, Jennifer, please call the roll of vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Kost?
Yes.
15-04 passes 10-0. Next, we have 15-05, also on second reading.
Resolution 15-05 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Kost, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rath, ODOT legislation to construct a new interchange of State Route 16 and Cherry Valley Connector.
You've heard the second reading of 15-05. What is your wish?
Mr. President, Mr. Kost. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 15-05.
Motion by Mr. Kost.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 15-05? Seeing none, Jennifer, please call the roll of vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Kost?
Yes.
15-05 passes 10-0. Finally, on the second reading, we have 15-06.
Resolution 15-06 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Kost, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rath, a resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard the second reading of 15-06. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake?
Move to adopt 15-06.
Motion by Mr. Blake.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bub. Any discussion on 15-06? Seeing none, Jennifer, please call the roll of vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Kost?
Yes.
15-06 passes 10-0. Now, the resolutions on the first reading, 15-07.
Resolution 15-07 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Rath, Mr. Kost, Mr. Marmee, a resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
15-07 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 15-08.
Resolution number 15-08 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Rath, Mr. Kost, Mr. Marmee, a resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation and its expedited.
15-08, Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, move to waive the two-day reading rule.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mr. Marmee, to waive the two-day reading rule. Mr. Blake?
It's a employee payout.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Jennifer, please call the roll of vote to waive the two-day reading rule.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Kost?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived, Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, move to adopt 15-08.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mr. Kost. Sorry. Any discussion, any other discussion on 15-08? Seeing none, Jennifer, please call the roll of vote.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Kost?
Yes.
15-08 passes 10-0. Finally, our last piece of legislation tonight, 15-09.
Resolution dash, I'm sorry, resolution 15-09 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Rath, a resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
15-09 will be held for a second reading. Jennifer did a great job tonight. Jennifer happens to be sitting in. Our clerk is out with health issues in her family, and I see Jennifer sitting at court, so she's doing nice, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have our second opportunity for comments for citizens. Again, the same rules apply. If anybody would like to speak, please raise your hand, so I know you'd like to speak, and I'll point it at you here in just a second. Yes, just a second.
Hi, I'm Roberta Barber, 917 Goodmore Avenue. And actually, I'm as speechless right now as I was watching the Super Bowl in the last two minutes yesterday. So, I just.
Especially for a Seattle fan.
I'm looking around at a room of people, and shame on all of you guys that aren't supporting Mr. Rath, who's trying to do the will of the people. And so, I didn't hear anybody stand up here for, to continue this ban, but I see a whole bunch of people that wants you to ban this, and you totally, I don't know what about this table and stuff. It didn't sound right, but it didn't go his way. And so, I guess you've just pretty much said, "Forget all of us voters that are sitting here."
That's not necessarily the way.
Okay, explain it to me.
We just got tabled for the, or the first, we just read it for the first time. Usually, it's voted on the second reading. Mr. Rath was asking to waive the two-day reading rule, so that he can make a motion to table it, because Mr. Blake is not going to be here in two weeks, and he wanted the full council to vote on it. Didn't get enough votes to do that, so it'll be read again in two weeks and voted on then. So.
Okay, so, what do these people have to do to change your mind? Because, again, I haven't seen anybody stand here and say, "I'm for this ban." Do they need to double the number of people here? Do they need to get a petition? They need to bring their dogs? I mean, I've heard experts saying, you know, "Are you making an educated decision?" Actually, is what I'm concerned about. Or are class issues coming in when you guys are looking at some of the people that are for pit bulls, and you're looking down on them? I'm really, really concerned. And so, I vote, I blog.
Thank you, Ms. Barber.
Don't make me clear the room, okay? Ma'am.
Good evening, council members. My name is Tammy Norton, and no, I'm not from Newark. I am from Dayton, Ohio. I know that seems to be a problem with some people lately. However, I'm an attorney in the state of Ohio, and therefore, I travel at will, so to represent people's interests, such as the dog owners that are here this evening. I know we discussed it before when I was here last, but I do want to reiterate the due process problems that we have in this city. And since we've discussed finances this evening, and you've discussed cost, I just want to let you know that there's two ways that it can be approached with this due process problem. One is that your animal control officer starts bringing dog owners in, and these pit bulls in for hearings. Okay, so now you have to have special hearings. Now you have to pay overtime for your animal control officer to come in and testify. When you have a hearing, it's a rebuttable presumption that this dog is a pit bull. So, guess what the other side's going to do? We're going to bring in experts. And we're going to bring in experts to tell you that the dog's not a pit bull, because there's no such thing. So, I think we can talk about breed identification. I can provide you with an affidavit from a geneticist, who actually has worked on dog genes, from the university, I think Wisconsin, is Dr. Azari. I don't know if you know of Dr. Azari. But he actually filed it in a court case in Florida. I can also provide you with studies from veterinarians who have done multiple studies, scientists who've done studies on breed identification, visual breed identification. I'm happy to provide all of those to you, so that you can take a look at them. The second way that the due process goes is that your animal control officer and the city council continue to ignore the due process rights of their citizens, and in that case, your city gets sued. And they get sued under 1983 action, and that costs the city money as well. So, in reality, simply taking out this very tiny little portion of this ordinance, taking out the breed discrimination language that we have currently in Newark, is easy and it's cost-effective. And I think that's on top of the safety issues that you all, I know, are very concerned about. It's also the finances of your city. You have a brand-new fire chief I saw tonight, and I'm sure that he would love to spend some of that money that would get spent on dog cases on his new fire department. So, thank you guys very much. And like I said, if you need any information, I can pass it to Mr. Rath, and he can get it to you.
Yeah, if you want to send it to Mr. Rath, or send it to me, I'll make sure it gets to anybody if you have any you'd like to send us.
I will do that, thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Ma'am?
My name's Deanna King. I live at 99 Manning Street. I had my pit bull taken from me. Not taken, I had to give him up, because I couldn't abide by these rules for him. He is now a therapy dog. He was put in the shelter on October 23rd. Five days later, he was adopted by a loving family and became a therapy dog. Not all pit bulls are vicious, is the way in which the owner raises them. We are not Michael Vicks out here. We are loving people that love our animals, just like our children, and they are not vicious. And I ask that you take this out. I have a child that is emotionally disturbed, and I had to give her dog up because of this ordinance. She loved this dog, and it has crushed her. And for me to have to take my kid's pet away from her, this was not fair. I did not plan on speaking, but I'm very angry over this. I went to court on these dogs. Toby had 15 people in there. And this judge looked at everybody and said, "Does this dog warden have anything better to do than to bring people in here on these dogs?" Literally. I think Toby's just out to...
It's not part of the issue.
Okay, well, I'd like to see the ordinance taken away. I don't think these dogs are vicious. And I just wanted to let people know that, you know, people having dogs take, given up because of this is just ridiculous. It's not all pets, or a cocker spaniel can be vicious. A chihuahua can be vicious. I'm done.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else would like to speak? We have one more.
June Ryan, 162 James Street. I have a dog, and it's a schnoodle, schnauzer poodle, little guy. I used to be scared to death of pit bulls only because of what I heard, you know. Never really knew one. And then I have a real good friend that we made best friends with, and she has a pit bull. Beautiful dog. All it does is lick me. Her name's Sadie. She's on TV. I just want to let you know, just fantastic dog. Good dog, you know. Thank you.
We have any comments from the administration this evening? Mr. Rhodes?
Not in regards to pit bulls. I've asked Mr. Kost to call a service committee meeting. The group that is proposing the zoning change on River Road are going to be in to make a presentation on some ways to help fund some of the improvements that are needed out there in terms of street. And I have it currently tabled at the planning commission level, and I thought that we'd allow the group to come in and make a presentation to council. There's no legislation here. Then, after the presentation, we'll take it back to planning commission, which there won't be a public hearing, and this will allow citizens to have an opportunity to come in and speak, whether they like their ideas from the development company or not. So, it's kind of one more additional added step that we're going to do to allow the public to have some additional input. Then, at that point, it'll come back to planning commission. I'll render an opinion, and it comes back to council for you to make a decision whether you'd like to rezone it or not. And, but I wanted to give them an opportunity to speak to council, make a public presentation.
And plan on doing that next week?
And Mr. Kost's committee.
Okay. Mr. Kost?
Mr. Rhodes, can I assume that the, those folks out in that area are going to be notified?
Yes, we, but we will begin to notify them tomorrow. And one of the reasons I stand in front of you tonight is hopefully the media will catch that too, which will help get the word out. But yes, we do have a contact list of people that have come, and we're going to be contacting them from my office.
So, there will be a public hearing for us, but not like...
Not at the planning commission. We've had our public hearing, and that's why, because the issue has been met with some resistance. I felt that if we had one more committee meeting with a proposal on some, maybe some funding solutions, we'd get your guys' feedback, and then we'd make a decision. solutions, we'd get your guys' feedback and then we'd make a decision.
And then it'll come back to council.
And it'll come back to council, and you guys will have another public hearing, and then you guys can make the decision whether to rezone the property or not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Our honor, Mr. Johnson?
I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ball director, Mr. Sassen?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Sassen. Mayor Hall?
I'll pass, Holden.
This is a miscellaneous comment, so council will get an opportunity to speak. They have three minutes to speak on anything they'd like. In case you wonder what's going on, I'm sorry. Mrs. Floyd?
It's nice to have a new fire chief. We're happy to have that there as a fire chief without a pass.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Guthrie?
Thank you, Ms. President. And I'm sure that we will have a good discussion in two weeks on pit bull legislation, but I just did want to make a comment at this stage, and that is that it is, you know, it is a shame that we are dealing with this. As a matter of fact, the last legislation regarding this was sponsored by Ms. Loomis and Barbara Call, and the minute she said that that legislation was fair and equitable, the...
Is it by your music in the background of your speech, or is it just...
Yeah, it's here.
Okay, I'm sorry. It was a very nice song.
Good timing. But you know what? One thing I've heard, the folks here have been very respectful. You know, I may share a different opinion, but one thing I feel like I need to make clear from my perspective is, it's not about the good owners that run this room. And there's a lot of good owners in this room. That's not why Ms. Loomis sponsored this the last time, I'm sure, to penalize the good owners. And so it is, it's a shame that sometimes that there have to be laws on the books like this that impact good people because of bad ones. And, you know, I will just tell you folks, I mean, you deserve to know where I stand. I'm not going to vote to repeal this. And I'll take all the heat that comes with it, but I'm not going to. I've seen injury caused, and, you know, sometimes especially, you know, I saw at this last meeting, we had some beautiful young children in this front row who probably have a pit bull in their home, and I'm sure that they have a loving relationship. You know, I think of my own grandchildren, my loving grandchildren, how, you know, we've had dogs over the years, and my little granddaughter, who's very sick right now, has a wonderful dog that is her companion. And that is, it's a wonderful thing. But, you know, once, and I know that I think, understand, Mr. Rath circulated an email I sent of the video of the dash cam from Cincinnati, and it did affect me. It did affect me. And so did the bite of the little girl from Heath, I believe in 2013, when I saw those pictures. That affected me too. And so I, you know, I'm just one vote out of 10, but you need to know upfront, I'm going to be honest with you, I cannot vote to repeal this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Ms. Hall?
Well, I wanted to thank Mr. Guthrie for those comments. I think we all have gone back and forth, you know, we have yet to vote, but thank you, appreciate that. Final pass.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Mr. Johnson?
Well, I guess I'm on the other side of things. I just don't feel that we need to label one breed of dog as vicious when there are several others, obviously, that also have bitten people. It's, again, it comes back to the owner. And if the owner doesn't take care of it, the owner ought to be penalized, and penalized heavily. And that's my opinion.
Okay. That's the last time I'm going to tell you. Next time, I'm going to clear the room. Try to be more than nice. No more of that. Either way. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Marney?
I wasn't really prepared for this, but I did want to kind of share some information. I guess I want to start out by saying that the legislation, one of the first things that I think of any time that we have legislation in front of us is, first of all, is it enforceable? If it's not enforceable, and it's not fairly enforceable, then we should not have it on the books. I really feel that this legislation is not really enforceable in a consistent manner. I think it's cost prohibitive, which is kind of a viewpoint if we talk about safety, but there's no proof that the safety has changed because of this law. I'm trying to get to this.
Mr. Marney, would you like me to go a couple more, come back?
Yeah, I guess so. I don't know what is going on here.
Sure. Mr. Rath?
Really? Are you ready? Let's go. Hang on just a second. Sure.
How about those Patriots last night?
We'll say that the victory parade has been delayed today because of the snow. Two feet last week and a hundred foot today.
I guess I can start this off by saying that State Farm, although they are my bread and butter, I am sold on them. You know, I can tell you that I definitely kind of believe State Farm. However, some things that you need to know about State Farm is they are the largest property and casualty insurer in the nation. They insure one out of every five homes, and they insure more homes than any other company. They have more statistical data than the government. If you ask anybody who's taken actuarial science in college, the one place that they want to work is for State Farm Insurance because it is the mecca of actuarial science. They know what they're doing, or else they wouldn't be as large as what they are, they wouldn't be as efficient, and they wouldn't be in your community, supporting your community. I want to share a video that State Farm put out. I can tell you, does this come off? I want to try to get a microphone closer, but here I might be able to just do this. I want to share with you that State Farm used to have breed-specific language. We used to ask the question, "Do you own a pit bull? Do you own, you know, a specific breed of dog?" We never asked if they owned a chow, but I can tell you what, chows cost our insurance company more money than any other breed of dog. This is kind of, I wish I could move this other thing, I hope it doesn't get in the way. Oh, it's not on here, it's okay.
Yeah, we can't see it.
But I just...
F-11 on that. If you hit F-11, it'll make it a bigger picture.
Okay. I want to share with you this video and then talk about it a little bit. Hopefully, the sound will come through.
Michelle Ramsey and her daughter Alex know firsthand how lives and fates can be altered in the blink of an eye. Oddly, they learned it while visiting a family member and her family dog when Alex was only two years old.
The dog was asleep, facing in the opposite direction. She never touched him. She didn't hurt him. Something startled him, and he basically just flipped around, and her little face was level with his. And he began to attack her face while I held onto her. He began to bite her in the corner of her eyes and down her nose, and I could see the light in between when he would stop, when he would pull away. But you have to imagine, it happened very quickly, I mean, this took a matter of 20, 30 seconds.
Insisting that a plastic surgeon tinted her infant daughter in the emergency room, the damage, minus a few small scars, wasn't permanent, physically or emotionally.
I still love dogs. That never really changed. I mean, now I'm more cautious with, you know, touching them, or if I don't know them, you know, being careful to pet them or something, but they don't scare me or anything.
But for Michelle, the effects of that day may never go away.
Still dealing with it. Not just with her, I'm very protective of anybody that's in my life. I've become kind of a personal spokesperson for this. You'll hear a lot of dog owners say, "My dog would never bite." You don't know that. Every dog has propensity to bite because they're a dog. So homeowners, pet owners, anybody who owns an animal is responsible for making sure that everyone around them is safe at all times, including them. It takes 30 seconds. 30 seconds, and you're on a path with your family that you didn't envision, and you cannot take it back. You'll want to, you'll dream about taking it back, you'll feel guilty, but you can't. But it's there. 20 to 30 seconds.
The reason why I've shared this information is because I don't claim to be smarter than other people. I really don't. And I firmly believe that if State Farm, the largest insurance company in our country, thought that breed-specific was the way to go, that he would. And in the insurance industry, you are not allowed to unfairly discriminate. You are not allowed to unfairly discriminate. You are allowed to discriminate. That is what we do. Youthful drivers are more accident-prone than drivers that are 50 years old. We discriminate. We charge a different price. We do things like that in our industry, day in and day out. We have removed breed-specific language, ensuring that we are not unfairly discriminating. In that video, you see whose responsibility is it for safety? It is the responsibility of the dog owner, and it's the responsibility of the individual. It is my responsibility to make sure that if I'm around a dog, that I am safe. I face it on a daily basis whenever I go to inspect a property. I have no idea what kind of dog is there, but I guarantee you that I'm prepared. I make sure that, I usually whistle as soon as I get out of my vehicle, just to see if a dog barks, because I want to make sure that I am safe. The one time that I was almost attacked, it wasn't the property that I was inspecting, it was a rottweiler from the house next door came up and just, luckily, I was close to my vehicle and I was able to get it back into my vehicle. Again, it wasn't the person's responsibility that I was there, and it wasn't, you know, the breed, it was the person who actually owned the dog. It was their responsibility, and they failed in that responsibility. I think that this ordinance is unfairly discriminating. I feel that we need to make sure that if we do anything, we need to make sure that the owners of a vicious animal are held responsible if there is anything that does occur. Whether it's a german shepherd, whether it's a chow, whatever kind of animal it is that attacks. I had another dog attack my doll, and I tell you what, I didn't like it. And that dog was still just running the same. There was no consequences. So, again, I just feel that it's up to everybody on this council to make sure that they know. You can look at statistics, and I agree with the gentleman about his comments about statistics. I can make a graph look like anything, any way you want it to turn out, I can make it look good either direction. It's just a matter of how I put the numbers. But look at what is the actual impact, and can this law really be effectively enforced? And are we fairly and equitably enforcing it? I can tell you that I don't care, I'm not talking about the person either. I don't care who you put into that position to be able to identify a pit bull is extremely, extremely difficult, because there are so many variations, and there are so many different crossbreeds of different things, and, you know, I also have my own personal opinion about, there's really no true breed of pit bull. That terminology is just something that evolved. But I feel it is that everybody needed to really see that, and I didn't want to wait until the vote. I didn't want to wait until then. I didn't want to send out an email. I didn't want to hit the reply all and respond and try to debate it over the email. I wanted everybody to be able to see that. I'm going to be in support of changing the language. I don't believe that breed-specific is to the benefit of our city, and I don't think that it... I've had three individuals call me who have... One of them was in support of changing the language, two were not. By the time I was done with my discussion and I explained the reasoning why, they said, "Well, I understand that now, that kind of makes sense." So the two people that have contacted me as far as saying that, you know, they didn't think that the language should be changed, after I discussed it to them, they didn't feel the same way. So I urge all of you, that even those individuals that may be contacting you on the side that are not coming here, talk to them, ask them why specifically. Find out. After I found out why, they really had no justification as the reason, it was just a feeling, so... And without a pass.
Thank you, Mr. Marney and Mr. Rath.
Thank you. First, let me start off with saying congratulations to Chief Connor and his family. I think he's going to be a great fire chief. I think he's going to be here for a long time, and look forward to working with him. Onto this issue. I guess first, let me address Mr. Guthrie's comment about circulating a video. I did not circulate a video. I took a video that you sent to every single council member, and I forwarded that on to one person outside of council. What happened to it after that? I don't know. But if you didn't want that to be seen by anybody outside of council, you should have specified that, and if you did, I'll tell you that's probably subject to public information and could be gotten out anyways. So I did not circulate a video, I sent it to one person. In regards to this issue, you know, we've heard a lot of opinions. We've heard a lot of facts. We've had dog owners come up here and talk. We've had, we've got trained professionals that have come up here and talked. We've got attorneys that have come up here and talked. I have talked with more people than I care to talk to about this issue. I can't walk out of my house without somebody coming up and talking to me about this issue. And I'm out of my house a lot. I am not a hermit. I don't sit at home. I go out a lot. I socialize a lot. I'm out all over the place, all the time, very rarely in my house. And I can't take a step without somebody coming up and talking to me about this issue. And I've not had anybody, let me rephrase that. I've had very, very few people say that they were against this. I've had the overwhelming majority of people say that they were absolutely 100% for getting rid of breed-specific legislation. I'll tell you my objective here. I have two. One is... But is, I see a room full of people that are trying to affect change, and they come to a safety committee meeting, with a safety committee up here and other council members back there, and after a two-and-a-half-hour discussion, and after somebody blatantly say, "Well, somebody please represent us about our voices being heard," nobody stood up, except for me. Shame on every one of you. Every last one of you. Because that's what we are elected to do. Whether you agree with their issue or not, that's what we are elected to do. Whether you have a personal opinion about what you feel about this specific issue, I don't care. Because you're not elected to represent you. You're elected to represent the citizen of Newark. One more time, how many people here are citizens of Newark? Live inside the city limits? Great, put your hands down. One more time, how many of you that live inside the city of Newark are registered voters?
Mr. Rath?
If you didn't, raise your hand because you're a registered voter. Shame on you. Why are you participating in this process if you're not a registered voter? Go out and register to vote. This ordinance, my other objective is to make the city of Newark safer. And this ordinance does not make the city of Newark safer. The restrictions that we're putting on pit bulls that we're not putting on other dogs has done nothing to make the city of Newark safer. I have been incredibly consistent in every dog legislation that's been introduced with my message. I want it to be incredibly difficult for a vicious dog to live in the city of Newark. And I want it to be incredibly painful for an individual to own a vicious dog in the city of Newark. I don't mean I want to slap it a wrist. I don't mean I want a little minor misdemeanor. I don't mean I want a $9 or a $50 or a $100 fine. I want it to hurt. You own a dog that attacks somebody? I want you to feel it. I want you to make sure that that never happens again. And I want to make sure that dog never attacks again. I understand about rehabilitating dogs? I am not interested. Dog attacks me viciously, goes to bite me above the shoulders, I want that dog euthanized. That's it. One shot, you're gone. We do have an ordinance that we passed a few months ago that gives the judge the discretion to order a dog euthanized after the first bite. I think that's a good step. It gives the judge discretion. It doesn't mean that if you start all lab that's protecting its puppies and that dog bites you, that that dog's going to be euthanized. I don't think it should. It doesn't mean that if you're tangiting on your dog and it turns around and snaps at your hand, it's not going to be euthanized. I don't think it should. But if a dog viciously attacks somebody, I definitely think that dog should be euthanized. Unfortunately, what you've seen tonight, in my opinion, is a combination of class warfare and partisan politics. Why you wouldn't give somebody more time to do more research on an issue is beyond me. It wasn't like I was calling to waive the two-day reading rule and insisting that we vote tonight. I'd thought about doing that, and I thought, no, that would make me uncomfortable. That's ramming it down somebody's throat, and I didn't want to do that. To give us more time to extend this out to the middle of March, I really don't see a problem with that. So we're going to vote on this in two weeks. Fortunately, we'll have a roll call vote. If you want to see an end to power distance and politics, and you're a registered voter in the city of Newark, see me in the lobby after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rath. Mr. Guthrie, you want your minute?
Yeah, well, since Mr. Rath did reference me, I want to make something clear. When I sent you the day's come video and the other members of council, I did not ask people to vote one way or the other, so I don't want the suggestion that I played any round rubber violation of sunshine law, because I didn't. I simply shared it with you. It was shared with someone else, and that's fine, you had right to do that. Everybody in here has a right to Google that day's cam video. So I just want to make it clear, there was no intention other than to bring information in front of all of council that this councilman felt was relevant. The rest may not. But, you know, you share, that's a public document, Mr. Rath. I email you anything, you can share with anybody you like. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Mr. Lath?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Chief Connor, and also, just to explain my vote on waiving the two-day reading rule, I had a discussion with a resident in the 4th Ward today about this issue of waiving it through, and she said she couldn't be here tonight. And I think a lot of people were under the impression it will be voted on in two weeks. So I was under the understanding that if that were to go through, but then the vote failed to waive it on the next time around to a specific date... failed to waive it the next time around to a specific date, then it would be called to a vote tonight, and I just wanted to make sure there's no chance it would be rushed through tonight when some citizens have the understanding that it's going to be in two weeks. So just to clarify that, and with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Lattes. Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, I, you know, I sit through here and I eat my M&amp;M's. I don't know if you guys like peanut M&amp;M's. I eat my peanut M&amp;M's, and I recently, you know, I'm a Democrat, so I'm joining up with three Republicans, so it's not necessarily partisan here. This is a citizens' issue. I feel this is a fairness issue. I feel this is a, obviously, it's a divisive issue. I do want to thank my friend, Councilman Raff, because tonight's action, what he was trying to do was to allow me to vote on this issue when I come back from vacation. Several of you, all of council knows, administration knows, I'm going to be going to Tillingham here in two weeks for a friend's wedding, so I will not be here on the 17th to vote on this particular issue now. And so Mr. Raff's actions was to move the issue back until I return to Newark, and so I do want to publicly thank him for that effort. Unfortunately, majority of this council was not going to allow me the opportunity to do that, which is unfortunate, because I am supportive of removing the breed-specific legislation, but now you're down one vote because of that. So you'll have to double your efforts in convincing some of the other members. It's, so that's unfortunate, but we'll move on beyond that. I too am, I'm just, you know, I'm very, I'm actually happy right now. Week after week, you folks have come here, you've found an issue that you're passionate about, and, you know, it's something that you've organized around, you know, I, you can't dismiss that. You can't dismiss the power of what all of you have done. You've come together to advocate for something that you love and you're passionate about, and that's just, that's just amazing. That's just outstanding. And I, if we had more citizens engaged on issues of poverty, on issues of transportation, on issues of livable wages, what kind of community would we be in? So I don't diminish this issue, I just, this power that you have, that people have, to influence their government, to influence change, is just amazing. So I do want to say that. But I do believe, several of these other members have said, it is the owner, not the breed. I mean, it is so divisive, because I too have received Facebook messages, emails, telephone calls actually are the most powerful, to be honest with you folks. Telephone calls are so powerful because an email message could be easily deleted, or Facebook message, or even, I know we have some bloggers in the audience, but blogging, we kind of get insensitive to that type of stuff, but phone calls really do make a difference. And, you know, people called me, as some other people said, you know, Jeremy, I think you should keep it the same. And then I asked the question, "Why do you feel that way?" And they don't offer, it's sort of, there is no justification on why they want to keep it the same, because they don't know the cost that this legislation, this law is putting on people. People have gone to jail because of this. People have, you know, they don't know that. All they know is they hear, "Pit bull, I don't like it, keep it the same." That's all they know. They don't know anything further. But we have heard, week after week after week, of you folks coming here and talking to us, and, you know, I commend you for that. I commend you for doing that, for coming here and doing that. And so I, you know, unfortunately, I won't be here in two weeks to vote on it. I've had this trip planned for some time now, and so I will be out of the country, but, you know, I wish you'd good luck in your lobbying efforts with the other members, so with that. I do want to announce, and I want to thank Director Rhodes. Director Rhodes and I and Amanda Vazella at the Yes Club, we're working on a project for this Friday, February 6, at 3:30. We're calling it #NewarkLove. As all of us know, the weather is cold, it's freezing, and there are those in our community that are less fortunate, those that are living on the street and those that are not doing well. And this project is to collect gently-used scarves, hats, gloves, mittens, anything that you might be able to lend, please take to the Yes Club. And then on Friday, we're going to use the southwest corner of the courthouse square and also the trees on that corner. We're going to put these items with messages of hope, messages of peace, onto these items so that homeless people in the evening or in the nights can come and freely take them without prejudice or without discrimination. So we'll be doing that on the southwest corner of the square, and then also along Railroad Street in the south end, because we do know there are some homeless folks that use those trees in the south end for shelter and things like that. But again, if you have items you want to give, feel free to take to the Yes Club, and the event is actually going to start at 3:30 on Friday at the Yes Club, we'll be going to those locations. I'll call finance committee meeting for next week, which I will be there for that, and then with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Joy of your chair brings back some good pictures. Mr. Buck?
I'll pass, thank you.
And Mr. Cost?
I also want to congratulate Chief Connor. I think it'll be a good start for the city of Newark. I do need to call for a service committee meeting. About a year, a year and a half ago, we had a couple come in front of us, and they were looking for a way to have their pit bull taken off of the vicious category. And with some back and forth, we were able to find that way with some training and some certification for the dog to then no longer be considered vicious. And at that point in time, I felt that looked like a good solution to what we were trying to do. I still think that's got merit. But now, we're looking at this in a broader view, and this probably isn't going to surprise anybody sitting here, but I have a little bit different perspective than some of the other members. There's some things that I agree and disagree with, honestly, both ways. To begin with, I do believe that any dog can be vicious. I think any dog can be dangerous. I think any dog can be a nuisance. If a small dog bites my ankle, then he's a nuisance or he's dangerous, but when he bites a small child's face on the floor, then that dog's done, as far as I'm concerned. It's done, period. I also have to be realistic enough to say that if we have a larger dog, it has a larger bite, you're probably going to have more injury. And I don't mean just a pit bull. I mean a larger dog. I think what we're trying to do here with removing pit bull from the legislation, the way Mr. Raff's approaching this, with all due respect, I think we're starting from the wrong end of this. I think we're, if you'll excuse the expression, letting the tail wag the dog. And I think where we need to start is with irresponsible owners. I think that's where the problem lies, and I think that's where I would rather see us work on this from, instead of trying to work on it from the breed. I think we need stricter guidelines. I think we need stricter penalties, and as you saw, Mr. Raff agrees with that as well. If I own a dog and I have any concern about its behavior, that if I'm a responsible dog owner, I either need to have that dog trained, or I need to get rid of that dog. So to me, that's what the definition of being a responsible owner and what is the definition of safety. And let's face it, accidents happen. Accidents happen when you're doing everything the right way. Accidents happen when you have a dog on a leash, which I'm glad we have all dogs on a leash. I think that was a good move. Here's the final question for me. What risks are you willing to take? If you folks are convinced, if this group is convinced as a whole that this is the will of the city of Newark, in my opinion, if this doesn't go through the way you want it to, then I think you ought to look at a citizens' initiative and find out if you think the citizens of Newark would support this. Then you would know for sure, it would be on the ballot, you'd have a vote. That's democracy, and that would be my suggestion to you if this doesn't turn out the way you want. When I took my oath, I stood here and swore that I was going to do what I thought was in the best interest of the city of Newark. As it stands right now, I do not feel this legislation is in the best interest of the city of Newark, and I cannot support it. I appreciate that you've all come. I appreciate that you've been here to voice your opinions. I'm glad you've had the opportunity to do that, and I thank you for the opportunity for me to be able to express mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cost. Just a few bookkeeping things. Next Monday, the 9th, will be our next committee meeting. Our council meeting will not be the 16th, it will be February 17th at 7 o'clock, right here in this room. Once again, I'd like to thank everyone for coming and being part of your Newark City Council and expressing your rights. Well, with that, is there a motion adjourned? Motion. Motion, I'd like to give a second by Mr. Paul Salm. Have you seen if I've been saying aye?
Aye.
Or adjourned.